Oh, we're Mr. Tyrone Lincoln.
Where are we? Just like, like two weeks ago, we talked about not, not doing the dirty with animals. Are we back on this topic?
I ain't scared of no thunder. Come at me lightning. Oh!
Oh, that guy said that.
I thought we passed it that. We're not gonna do that.
Alright, bringing the meeting to order dated, uh, twelve nine nineteen eighty-five. City Council meeting is in session. Um, please have your seat.
Thought it was nineteen eighty-four.
No, no. That was the last.
Oh, maybe we missed any of it.
Please hit your head, cause I could check you for a concussion.
Um, yeah, nineteen eighty-five. Uh, moving forward, uh, I'm gonna do some clean up the house first and then an announcement.
I know, we gotta do a pledge, sir. I'm sorry, uh, point of one.
Alright, that's fair, fair, fair. And that was not me upset at that.
I guess so, and no one remembers where the flag is.
Choose, choose what serves you.
Uh, you are. It's your bill.
You, you're, you, you are. Like, pu- pledge allegiance is to, to flags.
To the flag.
The United States, United States of, of South America. Republic.
Yes, to the republic.
Where which it stands.
And one nation.
Under God.
The gods in someplace. Divisible.
Liberty and justice.
Over sovereignty with liberty and justice. Or, well, most, most. We're in the south part of America, sir. We are in the south part of America, sir.
Thumbs up for America, alright, alright.
Oh, and, uh, happy holidays. Happy holidays.
Oh, yeah, happy holidays.
No, we say Merry Christmas here.
No, sir, you, you missed that word.
Merry Christmas.
Alright, alright. We don't, we don't celebrate Christmas in Los Angeles anymore?
Merry Chris-
Christmas, it's all holidays are Christmas, sir, come on. Christmas is a holiday.
Alright.
Holiday Christmas. Oh, wait a minute.
Moving on, moving forward. The, uh, the announcement I wanted to make? Councilman? Do you want us to stand in recess while you go talk to your personal lawyer? Uh, moving forward, um, I wanted to make the announcement that the D, the next week, the DMV will be open, be run by City Hall. Ooh, um, the registration and all of that will be the same, and then we'll just work with, uh, PD to get the registrations in order. So the DMV will be up and running. We're currently working on the, whether or not to incorporate the driving school. We haven't got to that point yet, but, um, yeah, so that'll happen next week. Um, if you want to work, councilman, if you wanna work with the, uh, person running the DMV, go with that, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Is that William White?
No, William White has not been around, so I've, I've, uh, got someone else at City Hall to work, work there.
Gotcha.
Um, and the second announcement is, the mayoral elections are happening, uh, next month. So if anyone interested and want to be mayor, run against me, or whatever, uh, make sure you send in your request to be mayor to City Hall, and, uh, start putting your posters up. Um, but yeah, the election's in, I think, three weeks, so. Alright, moving forward. Alright, from my right to the left, um, let the council member come up. You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna make you guys come to the podium like we do everyone else. Come to the podium, council member, and state your name. Hey, it is very new, very new.
Will we be on this side of the podium? The talking outward?
No, no, I want you facing us. I want you facing me.
Oh.
Yep, yep.
I, I, I do not second that. I do not second that.
That's a dictator right there.
That's not a dictatorship. I run this city.
I do not, I do not second.
It's my responsibility to make sure these city council meetings run properly and run smooth. Do I make those decisions? And my decision, right now, is for you guys to go up there to the podium and present to the council your ideas.
I'll have a motion to overrule that.
There's an election in three weeks.
I, I, I make a motion to overrule that.
I second it.
Councilman Falcone beat my ass.
It's not for debate. You guys are sitting, it's just like everyone else.
A motion's been made, sir, you can't deny the motion.
This is the, this is the actual procedure of the City Hall. I don't have to need, I don't need a vote for that. Just get up there, speak to the people, like the people speak to us.
Happy mayor is a good mayor.
Come on, Pokey Bear, come talk to us.
Yeah, but then we're, then we're turning our backs to the people, uh, Mr. Mayor.
No, you're not turning your back. Stop being retarded.
I, I take that, I take that.
He's turning our backs to us.
I don't mean it in a derogatory term. I'll put it in the, I'll put it in the jar. Look.
That's five dollars for a jar.
Which way we're we getting people?
That's my mayor right there.
Listen, come up here, just like this, and state to the council, I am the mayor, and I don't have any legislation to pass this week, other than the announcements that I've made for the DMV and the mayoral elections. And by all means, if the council members want to run against me, I am welcoming anybody that wants to come and, and take this position. See how easy that is? Alright, Roiland, Roiland.
Sir, I have questions for you, sir.
Oh, yeah, questions? Alright, fine. Alright, let's go, yep.
Well, uh, this, the, well, the stuff that you've done in city council, uh, anyways, questions?
He can come down my throat.
Uh, questions?
So you're welcoming, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, you are welcoming challengers from the city council, uh, to, uh, go against you in the mayoral, coming mayoral election.
Well, it would be wrong for me not to, right?
But if it's so wrong, is it right?
It could be. That's for the people to decide though.
Alright, thank you, sir. That, that's all I have, uh, for you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Don't come out in front.
This is actually pretty nice. I do want you guys to do this. This is actually nice.
Mr. Mayor, did you steal Christmas?
No, actu- actually, it's, uh, the Grinch did, and we don't know who the Grinch is.
Are, are, are you denying that you are the Grinch?
I, I, yeah. Actually, you know, if, yeah, yeah. Could be.
I'm sure he welcomes people sitting on his lap.
Alright, any more questions?
Here, that's strong denial that he is, is a Grinch.
And I do apologize if I upset anyone. No, I do apologize if I do upset anyone. I'm dismissed, I'm dismissing myself. I'm dismissing myself. Uh, I do apologize if I did upset anyone within my words.
Wait, Mr. Mayor, you've been called back up there.
That's, oh, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, don't say the retard word.
I, I will. I, I do apologize. I made a mistake, and I won't say it again. No, no, it wasn't in that regard. I wasn't saying it in that regard.
Anyway.
It's America.
Alright, say again what's the question?
Do you, do you like all of the counselors equally, or is there one that you like more than the other ones?
Ah, that's such a good question. No, I, I love, anybody that's willing to come up here and represent the people, and, and, and go through, um, legislation and the right legislation has got high regards in my mind. I, I take this, while it may be, we have jokes and we mess around, I take this to some, to, I take this seriously in some regard, because what we do actually affects the city. The ramps that we help get in front of the City Hall helps people come to City Hall to get their business done. So, in that regard, in that regard, I hold you guys to very high esteem, and I hold you guys all equally, um, in my heart.
But, but, sorry, sir, uh, you're, you're, you're evading the question. Who's got your highest esteem, though?
Uh, you guys, I just said, no, no, I said, I said, I said equally. I said his name, by the way.
But, uh, uh, that's not true, like, you know, the nature doesn't work in equality.
No one loves everything equally, yeah, that's not how it works.
Well, you know, I don't love everything, but, but I love you guys equally. I don't love everything.
Okay, there we go.
Uh, my name is, uh, Chase Reeves. She's my manager. I love her to death. She's great.
So what I'm hearing is she should run for mayor. Alright, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, no. Any more questions? I'm, I'm gonna dismiss myself again. Okay. Please do, please do.
What was your name one more time?
Niall.
Uh.
Niall.
Alright, your turn.
Aye.
Easy, easy.
Well, I wish to be addressing the people. I will go ahead and go along with this.
It, it's actually pretty nice to see other people address us for a change.
Well, I've been on the other side. Anyways, um, I have two bills to present to council today. The first being the Medical Staff Protection Act. Um, this is in response to, um, a discussion we had, uh, last week, uh, and to address the growing violence against medical staff. Purpose of this legislative proposal is to enhance the protections of medical staff in the state of San Andreas by imposing stricter penalties of individuals who commit felonies against, uh, them during their duties. This aim proposes to ensure the safety and well-being of healthcare professionals, allowing them to afford their duties, um, be of harm. Essentially, uh, what this will do is any violent felonies committed against medical staff will incur a three times fine and time. Um, if this, if a continu- uh, serial, uh, felony is committed within seventy-two hours, uh, it doubles for every, uh, arrest within seventy-two hours. So, i.e. the second time will be six, the third time would be twelve within that seventy-two hour period. Simply put, we have gotta put an end to this, uh, medic- to this violence against medical staff. Um, they have a critical role, and we must, uh, make it known to all that we will not tolerate, um, medical staff being harmed, uh, while they are simply there to har- help everyone, you literally have no side, and I wanna make it, uh, a very clear statement to the people that we will not longer tolerate this violence against, uh, them as they, in such a critical role for the people.
Counselor Sicard, does this bill include private doctors, uh, who don't work for Pillbox or for the government?
Uh, it, so it could be amended, um, to state that I would have, uh, currently don't have, to my knowledge, any, uh, medical staff, um. However, I would be open to that, uh, amendment. It will include future medical facilities.
I, 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 I think that we, we should protect all, you know, medical professionals equally.
Agree, and that's why, so, please classify what, what you, what you would consider as a private medical professional.
Well, I, I mean, just somebody doing it, somebody doing any of the roles that you, you seek to protect, but not for the government.
Okay, can I, okay, so, when a person is a private practitioner, they still have access to Pillbox for said, like, um, scheduled surgeries, um, et cetera. So they would still be under the protection of that because they would have access to surgery rooms. They just can't treat emergency patients. Does that make sense? They have to be scheduled appointments for private practices.
Okay. So, do you have a, do you have a comment on that, council member?
Oh, no, I, I would agree that, that, that is, um, how it is, how it is written. Um, it is written to, so that all medical staff are protected. I just, to my knowledge, uh, Dr. Cat, this is definitely not my, um, field of expertise, um, but do we have any private, uh, medical staff, uh, working at this point?
Um, I believe that there is, uh, Regina, she was hired as a private practitioner. I know she has an office. I'm, uh, I was, now, I'm not sure if she's had, um, done any surgeries or anything, but, um, I do know that she is hired as a private practitioner. So as far as I know, we have one, so far.
So to clarify, in the definitions, um, I, I have put here, yes, uh, refers to any, uh, medical staff. Section three, uh, section one. Um, medical staff refers to any healthcare professionals, including but not limited to doctors, nurses, paramedics, and, and support staff employed at medical, Pillbox Medical Centers, uh, Sandy Medical Center, Parsons, as well as any future medical facilities in the state of San Andreas. So as long as, uh, under the definition that, uh, under the classification that Dr. Cat put forward, they would fall under the protections of this bill.
Alright. Could, could we just add, at, like, and, or, or like, or private practices?
We could add it. It wouldn't be necessary because they're by-
Yeah.
They're all doctors, brother.
They're all doctors, so they're, they're, when you're, when you're, like, protecting doctors, that would include private practitioners because they're still doctors.
Do, I don't know, do we have nurse practitioners that would, while not operating?
Including but not limited to. So that's why I put included but not limited to, though.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the, it includes all, all medical professionals, um, who are, you know, work out of any of these facilities. Um, eh, so yeah, under that classification, they would technically be employed by, um, medical, by Pillbox, in the, in the sense that they have the ability to use those facilities.
In a sense, yes, but they're not employed by Pillbox, as again, they're still private practitioners, so whatever scheduled appointments that they would have with their patients, um, would be between her, the patient.
So, yeah, I'd be, oh, yeah, I'll be happy to add, uh, private practitioners, uh, to this, just to ensure that there is no wiggle room out of it. The idea is to protect all medical staff, um, so ensure that, you know, there is no wiggle room, there's no loopholes. Well, uh, I am more than happy to add private practitioners, um, into that to ensure that there is no confusion on this.
Perfect.
Uh, if you don't mind me asking, Counselor, is this, uh, protect them, uh, on and off duty?
This is strictly while they're performing their duties. Um, so, you know, when they're not doing it, you know, they are private citizens. When they are, they are. Um, while they are actively performing their duties, um, they will be, have this protection.
Does, and I, and I don't know if, um, sorry, Billy, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, does the bill specify that, that, that doctors have a medical, um, context? You know, we don't, their philosophy to, to have these same protections?
Uh, refers to any healthcare professionals, though, I, I-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Should we get a Tommy this bill someplace?
It's, it has been presented to you in council chambers.
In our chambers.
Okay, I'm just-
And that would include, like, EMS going out on calls, that would, you know, protect them from, you know, threats of violence and kidnappings, robberies, cause they're just trying to perform a duty and help save lives.
Uh, does, is janitors also covered under support staff? Uh, including but not limited to. They, they would be the not limited to, um, and they, I would also consider them as support staff.
Okay, great. Does this also protect, and I'm not quite sure, it might be quite needed, but does this actually, does this protect them while they're off duty, not being forced to do things well?
It, this simply protects them while they are, um, on duty, performing their activity, performing their duties, um, as a medical professional.
The basis of when they're clocked in.
Yeah, no, no, I get that part. I'm just wondering if it's gonna protect those, cause, right, cause one of the issues that could come up, right, is they're forced to, to perform medical procedures. And I was just wondering if the bill covered that as well.
Oh, um, I, I think that would fo- that would fall in the class of while performing their duties. Uh, so that, if they're being forced to perform their duties, they, um, the articulation could be made that they are, uh, then protected.
I'd agree with that sentiment.
Correct.
Yep, I would concur.
Um, alright, if no other questions from the council, you can come sit down, and we have the, the, uh, public come in, uh, if they have any questions about your bill. They could ask you. The floor is open to the people. Any questions about the bills that were presented?
Niall.
Niall.
I am Niall.
Hi, Niall.
Hi, Niall. Uh, would this also include firefighters, cause some are trained as EMS?
They would, they would fall under the healthcare profession of EMS.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but they have, it's a good question, because don't they have it broken up to where it's gonna be, like, firejumpers, or what do they call them? And some would be classified as just firefighters for some portions of the time?
Yeah, so, there's only a few of the fire, um, that have that capability. Um, and then they would just be, when they, they would just be under the, the EMS at that time.
Okay, so they're always under the purview of the EMS, no matter what they're doing?
Um, if there's no EMS on duty, like, let's say, um, I'm on shift, and there's no EMS, and there's like, you know, a couple of fire that have that capability, they would respond as EMS, so therefore they would be working as a medical person with that protection.
Okay. Did that answer your question, sir?
Uh, it was also along the lines of, uh, like, why wouldn't firefighters also get that protection of, uh, like, security in doing their job as a, uh, government?
So, uh-
That's a good question, too.
Good question, this, uh, and I'm not objectionant to add it, um, to my knowledge, that has not been an issue. This was, uh, specifically brought to my attention to address the growing violence against medical staff. Um, however, if the council agrees, um, I have no problem adding firefighters, cause I do believe-
It's better to be pro- proactive than reactive.
No, and I agree.
I would agree. I would agree with that statement. Yep, I would, yeah.
So, um, could that led, uh, can you get that written into the legislation as well?
I, I can add it to the legislation as well.
Alright.
Oh, let, let me ask, is this duplicative of the, of ba- you know, basically the same as, like, you know, crime against a government employee?
But it would stack on, it, it would add, specifically what this does is add a classification, um, uh, uh, add a classifications that will apply a modifier. So, yes, they are, um, a government employee, but it would get, so say the, commit a violent act against the government, aggravated battery against a government employee. Um, this bill would occur vi- would multiply that time and fine by three, and the reasoning being that, you know, the, these particular classification of people are one hundred percent neutral, and provide, you know, or need to be highly protected than any, the rest of, uh, city staff, because, um, they are quite literally neutral bipartisan, who are here to do nothing but protect the people.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you for your insight and your, uh, your input.
Hello, my name is Jeremy.
How you doing, Jeremy? Floor is yours.
I'm, uh, gonna be hosting my first, probably the first AA meeting for the server. I'm curious if we're gonna get anything official, what's kinda stuff, mental health stuff?
It's a server.
Yeah, are you serving drinks at an AA meeting, sir?
Oh, sure, I'm, I'm in, uh, in this city, in this city, so I'm, I'm serving an AA meeting, you know?
Sir, have you been drinking?
Are you implying that we're living in a simulation?
Listen, alcohol serving goes hand in hand sometimes. Don't, don't beat him up.
I think he's drinking right now.
Can't be serving in an AA meeting. That's what I'm saying. So, sir, this is, um, the point of this part is to address the bills at hand. We'll have-
The bill, sorry.
Yeah, we'll, we'll open comment up here.
So what I'll do is, yeah, I'll open, yeah, I'll open the floor up at the end.
I, I promise I'm not drunk, I promise.
I believe you.
I don't-
Uh, any, any, anyone else have any questions? Um, I, I, I have a question, actually. Have you, have you spoken with, uh, prosecution AG or, um, justices and possibly chief, or anybody in police about this one?
I, well, this has been presented to Councilmember Paco, so I, I figure he has, he, well, not here, but he has the ability to, I have reached out to Chief of Police, I didn't hear from them. I did, uh, run this through and, uh, run this by the Attorney General's Office, um, both, uh, Benjamin Riggs and, uh, AG Caputo, and both seem to be on board with this. Um, I had a conversation previously with the Chief Justice, um, regarding this, not, this issue, but not this specific bill, um, uh, exactly.
Okay. Um, well, I'm, it's gonna be, I mean, I, 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 I agree completely, wholeheartedly that, that, uh, wholeheartedly that-
Wholeheartedly, sir.
Wholeheartedly, my whole heart.
We, we can see our breath in here.
Yeah, well, I got a cold heart right now, I guess. Uh, that, that these protections need to be in place. We need to make sure that we do our due diligence with the times and fines, um, cause that's a very powerful thing to change. Someone's time they spend in jail and the amount of money they pay for their fines. So I wanna make sure that we are following the same pattern that is, of the algorithm that is being used for the current times and fines, and that if those two times were applied, it, and all of that is, is checks out, and they're on board with that. Cause this is a big, this is a big jump in punishment. While I think it's warranted, we just need to make sure we do our due diligence, and that's the minimum requirement of the council.
Uh, I, I did get the, uh, it, I do believe, and I won't put words, but if, uh, the AG would like to speak on this, um, I do believe that they were on board as well as, um, Benjamin Riggs, so, who I believe, uh, who also is one of the members of AG's office. Um, if the Chief Justice has anything to say, he's, um, more than welcome to answer any questions he has at this point. Oh, I do.
Oh, hey, hey, you're, you're welcome to talk, Mr. Chief Justice.
I do. My name is Vinnie. If you guys don't know me, that's probably good for you. I am Vinnie.
Are you the Chief Justice?
I sure am, Mr. King. I sure am.
Okay, good to know, good to know.
Uh, Mr. Sicard, as a defense lawyer, how would you, uh, defend somebody from a bill you're introducing? If your, your client will now be, uh, facing three times the charge of, assume aggravated battery against a government employee? How would you defend that? Um, I, I would defend it the same way I would defend any other case. I would look into the facts and determine whether or not there is, you know, reasonable proof that they have committed the crime they're being accused of. And if they committed, uh, that crime, would you be looking for loopholes to, to defend that client from the bill that you're introducing right now? Absolutely not, because in, in the bill, it specifically says that no reductions, uh, will be issued for this, so they're, uh- So is it an automatic guilty plea? Is that what you're saying? I'm not saying it's an automatic guilty plea. I'm saying that they have, they're more than welcome to fight it in court, uh- But you would be the one defending him against your own bill. Do you see what I'm saying? Yes, I understand that. I would be defending them against- Do you not think that's a conflict of any, in any way? I would be defending them against my, uh, the crimes they were, they're being committed, not the bill itself. The crime is, as a result of the bill that you're introducing, the, the time and fine, correct? But I would still fight, I'd be fighting the charge itself, of whether or not they have been found guilty of that crime. So, one, on the one hand, you want to punish them harshly for, for attacking, uh, medical staff, but on the other hand, you want to set them free, um, from, from the charges, period. You see how that's like a bit of a conflict there? My entire duty as a public defender is to provide a person, you know, a reasonable day in court. Uh, again, if they are found guilty, then, you know, then that's, you know, what happened in court. But again, I, sorry, um, and- when it comes down to it, if they wanna, you know, plead not guilty, and they have a reasonable ar- articulable case in court for me to make, I'll make that. Um, but that doesn't change, you know, the time and fine. It's just changed, that doesn't change this bill. Uh, at, at a bare minimum, you know, it should hopefully set at the precedent that, um, you know, we make sure that these people are properly charged, and, you know, we are enforcing these laws correctly. Okay.
Alright, any more further questions? Alright.
I am Niall. I know.
Hi, Niall.
Just wanted to make a sta- a statement, like, on, in the same way that, uh, they, they were saying about Mr. Sicard, uh, same could be said for Dr. Cat, considering that she's a medical professional, so this bill would directly infect her. But since they are here as council members, they're not here as their private practice, so it shouldn't be taken into effect whether they wanna push a bill for the people that they're, that voted them.
Sir, appreciate the comment.
Thank you, Niall.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I got one last follow-up. Um, so, you, does this take away any, uh, prosecutorial or, like, police, um, ability to change that times three? So like, if, if they come through, they get hit with that, they're getting that full times three. There's no way for-
Correct.
Oh. Do you see that as a kind of a problem, um, where you, you're taking away, like, uh, circumstances a- around this? Like, if somebody is found to be doing something violent on medical grounds, but not towards medical people?
That, that, that actually would not fall under the purview of this bill. It has to be against medical staff, not on medical ground. It, it's, uh, against medical staff specifically, not the grounds.
But th- then the moment you take away, like, somebody's ability to, um, you know, I have a problem with the idea of you're taking away the ability for someone to make a, a judgment call, uh-
Prosecutorial discretion is important.
Can I, they have made a judgment call when they decided to call and say, you're gonna do this, or we're gonna start murdering people and their blood is on your hands. Like, that's a judgment call that they've already made, so, don't-
So, Councilman, I'm not trying to defend, uh, people that are strictly going at this. Uh, as a prosecutor, I've seen multiple instances where people have been charged- So, Councilman, I'm not trying to defend, uh, people that are strictly going at this, uh, as a prosecutor, I've seen multiple instances where people have been charged with a crime, um, that they have committed, but.
Ah, there is a girl, there's no way.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to like, throw down the book at the, after that, but in these cases, that is, if, there are all these cases that that makes sense, but taking away the ability for a human to make a choice of that is, uh, I don't know, it, it doesn't feel right.
Well, and, and.
Again, they've kind of sort of already made a choice, actions have consequences.
I concur with that, um, in, in, in the spirit of moving the meeting along, I think what we need to do is to set a motion to table this. And move forward, because if, we could, we could literally, I think we could literally have a discussion on this all day, um, so let's, uh, I recommend a motion, I presented a motion to table this, one second. All right, we're gonna motion, we're gonna table this motion, uh, or the table, the motion to table has passed, we're gonna table your bill for now, we're gonna discuss it later to move the meeting forward, so we don't have one discussion.
Did you get the vote on it?
Uh, no, we're not gonna vote on it, we're, we're gonna table it, so we're not gonna vote on it right now.
Yeah, I meant, uh, I thought you had to like, vote on the motion to table.
There needs to be a vote to table, sir. Yeah, there was a vote to table and it was seconded.
But it's gotta be voted on, yeah, the, the motion's gotta be voted on by the entire council.
Uh, in the past, we just didn't, it just needed to be seconded, we just said a motion, somebody presents a motion, it gets seconded and you get some votes, um, do you have any more, uh, bills to present?
Uh, in, in the interest of time, I can hold off on my second bill, um, because that's also gonna be a very lengthy discussion.
Um, okay, alright, Councilman Falcone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oops, sorry, sir.
Thank you.
People, valuable people of the city, I thank you, I'm, I'm, I'm addressing the public. I thank you for coming out today.
He's gonna back us like this.
Yeah, I, I can't hear you, he's literally trying to get back on you.
Alright, I thank you for coming out today.
You have to speak into the microphone.
I'm speaking right into the microphone, can you hear me now?
Say it when you can.
Your chest, yeah, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes.
We voted him off the island.
It's not yesterday, Niall, geez.
Go ahead, go ahead, Billy.
Alright, so, I wanna bring up something very important, the weather has been very serious recently, especially some, you know, some very sudden and abrupt changes. Um, you know, go from, you know, clear, and you know, I mean, it's still cold, it's, it's December, but it'll go from like, very clear to, to like, so thick and foggy that like, you can't see two feet in front of you. And that's really dangerous, especially with like, you know, cougars running around, um, s- not that kinda cougar, Vinnie, um, I propose a.
Are you, are you proposing legislation for the weather?
Yeah, are you, are you trying to change the weather through legislation?
You, you're trying to legislate the weather?
We need to arrest the fog.
Fuck that fog.
It's gonna be a task force.
I propose a weather service to provide interested parties with a, 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 you know, some sort of forecast.
Isn't that what the Weather Channel's for?
Yes.
Ah, GG's, that was the play, homie!
I can't predict weather anyway. I feel like this would be a fantastic thing to bring up to Weasel News. Perhaps they can add a, a weather, uh, you know, time slot for their.
They, they can, but.
I agree with that, yes.
Power should be used to create a.
Can't legislate the weather, Billy.
No, but you can create a state weather service.
You gonna fund the state weather service?
They would be part of the National, uh, 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 the Parks Bureau.
Were you gonna say National Guard, were you gonna?
No.
You could bring that up again.
Okay, he's gonna say National.
You're the one obsessed with.
So, you're, you're, I don't wanna get into this National Guard discussion right now, the, are you presenting the idea that we would have a national weather service that would sit under the Parks and Recreation Department?
Yes.
How would we have a national department under a state?
Well, a, a city or state weather service.
Okay, you know, it would be ver- worded properly, but you get the idea.
Councilman Falcone, what would they do exactly?
They would provide the weather that Weasel News can then report on.
How, how would they get this weather information?
So then why wouldn't, why wouldn't the weatherman or woman on Weasel News take care of that already?
Also, didn't you say weather is very unpredictable and can change in a second right now, how are they supposed to predict that?
Yes, uh, uh, meteorology is not an exact science.
Yeah, my knee starts hurting when there's a storm, so, you know, I could, I could do that for you, yeah.
Oh, are you, are you gonna be our meteorologist?
It's gonna be bad weather today, bad weather.
Yeah, just, just put it under the money piece.
Would you like to give the weather forecast?
The moon is in Gatorade.
It's cold out. Cold and snowy out right now.
Look out the window.
Are you, are you, are you saying, are you proposing us to, to discuss this, or you're gonna present this as a bill?
I, well, I propose them to discuss it.
Alright, how are we to predict the weather in this state, sir?
Well, and that's, that's why it's important to have the, somebody from, from the government involved.
We have the equipment in.
Right, so, a government agency could get access to these, to this equipment.
Uh, Councilman Falcone, have you spoken with the, um, federal government?
With the weather?
Again, I don't think the council is, is a good place for this, um, establishment to, to come from originally. I think if, if it's in place and it's something that we could then do something with, then great, but I think it's hard for the council, and I'm not speak, maybe I'm not speaking for the entire council here, I, I just don't see the council dealing with this particular issue.
Okay, I mean.
No, there's, there's, the weather service, yeah, I can see that, but we don't even.
Yeah, that's what I'm speaking about, the weather service.
No, we have the technology here.
This isn't gonna go through review in a million years, Mr. Falcone.
A million?
A million, a million.
I care about the safety of the people.
Million years of review.
Oh, and, and, and so do we, so do we.
And not getting eaten by cougar.
Well, that, that, that's a whole different issue.
Uh, just don't go.
Well, no.
Don't go into the woods when there's a fox.
We don't need to know about your.
Well, no, I've seen them cross the street, I've seen cougars cross the street.
Watch out, boy.
And, and if there's, if it's foggy, then you may not see it coming, you might be able to run away.
I know, okay, so, okay, wait, 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 alright, so, given that example, what good would knowing the weather do for you reading in the paper when you walk outside and it's foggy?
Yeah.
Because if you know it could be foggy, you could take precautions if you're in a closed area.
But there's a window, there's a window right there, you can look out and see this.
If you look outside, you can see it's foggy.
That's a, only a real-time view.
Maybe we need to start, uh, a class at the college so that people can learn how to figure out if it's cold outside or not.
That's a good point.
Meteoro- there's a lot more to meteorology than that.
Meteorology is an actual science.
Yeah, maybe we can teach people how to wear coats.
Have you talked to, uh, yeah, well, have you talked to the college at all about wanting to start a weather service?
I, I have not, but, you know, also from a, from a maritime perspective, that, that those weather forecasts are important, as well as from an aviation perspective.
From an aviation's perspective, I can see that, and that's one of the things that I would imagine your school would teach, right?
Yes, but. Look up, well, yes, but no, it, literally, the weather can change so suddenly, it's literally, you're, you're flying fine one second, and then, oh, where's, where did the world go?
Again, you're getting back to litigation of weather, like, we can't.
Shouldn't you teach them how to deal with unpredictable circumstances?
Yes, absolutely.
Your duties, it's, yeah.
Which is why I'm alive right now, bec- because I learned how to deal with the unpredictable circumstance.
Yeah, so, when, when the fog rolled in, like, I, I couldn't see in front of my vehicle, I had to pull off to the side of the road, wind it out, like, that's just how.
Right.
I know, but it, it, but what good would have you known?
Yeah.
I wouldn't have gone up.
I would have driven so much faster.
Didn't you take someone in a helicopter and in, uh, dangerous conditions, and not return back to the heli- or turn back to the airport?
No, you turn around.
Oh, I'm asking, didn't you do that in the last couple days?
I don't believe so.
Re- regardless, regardless, I feel like, two things, if you wanna take this avenue, I think at least speak to the college about.
Mm-hmm.
Getting someone on, uh, taught up to handle this, while.
Well, learn them good.
Talking to the governor's office about what kinda technology that they could lend the college to teach the students to get the weather reports for the flight school.
Seems reasonable.
Right, and then you said maritime, so what if and when, um, we have boats, then that as well, is that?
Yeah, that's fine, although I, I, I should make you aware that there are boats in the city.
Well, I meant boats for like, police or for, you know, I'm not gonna.
Police do have a marine unit.
Yeah, the, a marine unit, you know, the ranger unit, whoever, whatever government entity has a set, has said.
Okay, no, I, I, I actually think that's a great, that's a great propos- uh, a great thing, which is, you know, why I bring it up as a, as a discussion instead of a bill.
No, 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 so, yeah, I would just, yeah, talk to the college and see, talk to the governor's office.
Okay, alright, we'll, we'll, open it up for people's discussion.
Well, I mean, might as well.
I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
Would, would the weather incur a fine if it was bad?
I don't know who the hell is talking right now, who, what's going on?
That's that hoster.
That guy, that was the last person I expected to be the one that was talking.
What's your name, sir?
Yeah, the, yeah, the tour.
My name's Tommy Wallace.
Oh, please speak up.
Prue, chef.
Were you speaking to the microphone?
Oh, yeah, here we go, microphone, here we go, yeah, my name's Tommy Wallace.
Hi, Tommy Wallace.
Hey, Tom.
Hi, um, this old weather thing, right, I feel like this is already like, done by Weasel News in it. They, they, they just give out a forecast, right?
Last I knew. Like, am I wrong?
Did, did we, oh.
Oh, what the?
Oh, wow.
Oh, my god.
Did they predict that?
I take it back, I take it back, he's right, he's right, I take it back.
Let's see here, right at forty-three after, no, it was right there, I got it, it was on the news report, right at forty-three after.
Oh, yeah, there it is, right there, it's on the newspaper, yep.
Oh, there you go.
Forty-three after, uh, sudden, sudden sun, sudden sun, it's head.
Alright, then I'd, I'd take it back, uh, but I do think it would be a good idea to have like a state service, but how, how would you go about it?
And that is a million dollar question right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a million fi- dollar photo, but not a million dollar answer to this question.
Hmm, alright, then, just leave it at that.
Thank you, Tommy.
Appreciate, thank you for your, thank you for your job.
Thank you, Tom, yep, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Good job.
Yeah, why is our breath still cold if it's so sunny?
It's still cold, it's still cold.
Oh, yeah.
It's still cold, it's snowing outside, it's snowing outside.
We live in a temporal dimension that takes time to warm up.
Someone threw the heater on, looks warm.
Calm down, gentlemen, ladies. Alright, uh, Falcone, do you have any more discussions and our bills?
I, no, that's it for today, thank you.
Alright, Mr. King.
Hello, my name is Boblin King.
Hi, Boblin.
Hello, the King!
I don't have anything to present today.
Except your beautiful self, thank you.
Wow.
Thank you, Boblin.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm not learning.
Actually, I might have something to present today.
I was just about to ask for your lawyer, yeah?
Yeah, I might actually have something to present today, my pockets are full, wait, we just. Merry Christmas, Dale, you can have that photo. Hit it, hit it over real quick. Ow!
Oh, no! Oh, Jesus! Oh!
Oh, my god, knock out.
But, 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 I mean, what? I would like to announce that I am unconscious.
Yay!
Uh, doctor?
Do you, did you, you mean my team, oh, you gave it to me.
You gave it to him twice from what I saw.
Alright, I, my, my personal lawyer has given me something three times, and one of those three things I would like to present. Okay, this is the No Trash Passing Act, this constitutional amendment hereby decrees that no citizen or raccoons shall be legally allowed to rummage through refuse within the city of Los Santos with the following restrictions. One A, the refuse must be within state-issued refuse containers, one B, within property boundaries of private land slash domiciles. Therefore, any refuse, two A, outside of state-issued containers, or two B, outside of privately-owned property lines and domiciles, or two C, anywhere within Blaine County, or two D, rummaged by any animal with the exception of raccoons. Shall be exempted from this act with the following punitive action, breach of this act shall incur an infraction community service of ten hours and a one hundred and twenty-five dollar fine.
Yes. Uh, Councilman Murball, uh.
No rummaging through the trash.
Councilman Murking, uh.
Yes.
Is it still your property once you throw in it in the trash and declare that you no longer want it?
That is not what is at issue here, what's at issue is here is rummaging through your personal dumpster on your property, which is your property, not what's inside of it.
Actually, not true, according, uh, the, once you have determined, thrown it in the trash, and assuming it is in a dumpster on the street, it is no longer your property.
But he is saying on your property.
I, I am saying a dumpster in your private domicile.
That would be, that would have to press that.
Can we ask an expert on this? Is it fenced off, yeah, can we?
Yeah, fenced off trash can in your private abode area.
Justice Wade, would you like to comment on this?
Boblin, I'm pretty sure dump- dumpsters are government property.
Yeah. Are all dumpsters government property?
I believe so.
Yeah. Okay, my word lawyer advised me that this wouldn't pass, and I was told to pass this by the vice mayor, so this was his Christmas wish, so I think I've officially fulfilled my, uh, duty.
Above and beyond.
Wish fulfilled.
Okay, thank you.
How much were you paid?
I was paid nothing, 'cause Christmas wishes don't have a price.
Except when they do.
Unless you want a car.
Unless you want a car, and then I, you can't wish for anything over ten thousand dollars, thank you.
I want a cheese wedge car.
Thank you, Boblin.
Alright, Boblin.
Thank you, Bob.
Alright, Mr. Williams.
Wish fulfilled.
Uh, Ashley Williams, uh, yeah, I don't have any bills to present, I do have a discussion, um, for those of you who are in the, uh, who call or industry of fishing, uh, there have been some major changes to, uh, what's been going on there. Uh, the import of fishing poles, uh, has, uh, we've seen apparently a, uh, reduction in their quality, and I'm reaching out to manufacturers to see if that's actually intentional, um, so, yeah, that's, uh, I'm, I'm looking into, uh, how fishing has changed recently and, uh, making sure that it's, uh, still equitable for everyone who wants to make a living at that, so, if there are any comments or any concerns about that, I would love to hear that. It might just be me, and thank you for the herring, uh, Councilman Boblin, that was a lovely little present.
Anytime, anytime, if any councilman wants a herring, I can give you one.
I'm not a councilman, can I have one?
Yes.
Do you keep the herring in a bathtub?
No.
No, 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 no. It is red, it is, very much red, yes, lovely red herring, by the way, just great, great coloration on it.
Did the, um, did the prices of the fishing poles change at all, or just the quality?
So, fishing equipment went up in price, uh, so the poles, they're starting at like fifty, um, and then, uh, bait has to save the same, but Thomas, that's the local guy, uh, that picks who does all the fishing sales. Uh, he is not paying nearly as much for fish as he once was, um, so I'm, I'm running, uh, an experiment to see, uh, if you can actually still make a living fishing, and it's looking like right now, uh, based off the poles being, uh, more fragile than they've ever been. It, it's not, not really super possible. But I'm looking for other people's, uh, experiences at this point, too.
Alright, I know the Rangers were involved in the fishing wildlife legislation that was brought up to the city council, have you spoken with them about anything, uh, regarding people complaining or anything like that?
Not, not at this point, but, uh, the limitations that were, uh, made for that bill would not, um, be reasonable based off of how, uh, things work now. But anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to them, but that's all, I, I just wanted to bring forth a comment on, uh, what I'm looking into currently, uh, for, for the city.
Okay, we thank you for bringing this forward and, you know, using your, using your expertise to help the city.
Appreciate that.
Councilwoman Cat, uh, yeah, Doc, do you have a question?
I know, I, sorry.
Uh, yes, ma'am, you have the floor?
Um, hello, Director Roxy, here, I was just, uh, putting, uh, uh, coming on to Council Ashley Williams there, but, uh, yes, you, you do change, uh, fishing poles, you know, it's quality and degrading. Um, the deep quality and basically, um, productivity of fishing, um, it's not really a livable, um, way of living, and, uh. And the fact that especially with, I believe, these laws, like, uh, the Rangers couldn't place with, you know, the protection of certain fishing species, you know, it's, you know, fishermen having to throw all the fish back in, um, you know, the fishing laws just get, you know, wear and wear and tear, and it, it's very not profitable for these poor fishermen.
I, I appreciate that comment, Doctor, um, yeah, well, I'm gonna continue looking into this, I'll bring some more information to the council next week, uh, about this.
Thank you.
That's my comment.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, Doctor, actually, Doctor.
Doctor, Director, Director.
Doctor, pillar of the community, Director, Doctor, Director.
Director, Doctor. Foxy Roxy.
Alright, uh, more questions, uh, Jason?
Uh, good evening, uh, Council, uh, Mayor, I don't have any, uh, bills to propose today. Um, so I will just, uh, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, love you.
You're welcome.
Any question?
No, I don't have any questions about that.
I have a question.
Make it easy.
There you go. Uh, Doc?
Wow, she just sprung up over that table.
Oh, yeah. Very impressive.
She's spry.
Hello, Dr. Catherine McCaskill, I don't have anything to present at this time, uh, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Doctor, Councilor McCaskill. Alright, it's a big man on campus, it's her. No, that's, that's inappropriate language.
Uh, thank you, Boblin. Uh, Alistair Humphries, uh, I have no legislation to bring to the table and no discussions to start at this time, thank you.
Thank you, wait, I have a question?
Uh, yes, Boblin.
How are you today?
I'm doing great, how are you doing today, sir?
I'm doing great, because you're here, serving your community, thank you.
Well, thank you, sir, I appreciate that, fellow councilman.
I, I, I have a ca, I have a question, Mr. Humphries?
Uh, yes, Councilman Sicar.
Did you prepare your second councilman, uh, uh, legislative speech?
Uh.
Councilmember prior to perform?
Uh, unfortunately, I have not, but, uh, I don't believe it's required, seeing as the fact that six other people went ahead of me and no one else, uh, gave a speech either, so.
I was being positive.
I think he has to sing a song.
Did you have to sing a song?
I'm happy to sing a song.
I absolutely.
Do you want to sing a song?
Okay, well, once he's done with the floor, you can have the floor.
No, please.
Yes, so, so here's the thing, here's the thing, we will go back in order, we will go, if, if I, if I have to sing a song, then we will go back in order, starting with Councilman Sicar, and he will sing.
No, 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 you don't have to sing, you do not have to sing a song.
Okay, but everybody else will.
Actually, can I, can I just point something out? Uh, Mr. King, my, my, my Christmas wish is that none of you people sing.
Oh, thank god.
No, you could give it to me, Chief Justice, what are you?
No one sings Grinch Week.
Happy holidays!
During this meeting or forever, yeah, how long is it?
I mean, it's Christmas, who cares, right, forever would be nice, but.
You're the Grinch, sir.
I refuse to, I'm not up for trial here.
Alright, none of us can sing forever as long as he says.
Alright, uh.
Christmas wish granted.
Yep, there you go, um, if the councilmembers don't have any more statements for the public, I would love to open the floor up to the public that can discuss any issue, any concern, um, you can tell me I'm a terrible mayor, uh, whatever you'd like, the floor is yours. Just come to the podium. You're a great mayor, sir. Thank you.
You will be missed.
We'll be missed, eventually.
Alright, hey, guys, um, I just wanted to give kind of a public service announcement to the community.
Oh, can you quickly give your name?
Uh, name's Lucas.
We can't see with your helmet on, man.
Yeah, what's your name and are you having a nice day?
Yeah, are you having a nice night?
Yeah, yeah, I'm Lucas Pitt, have a nice night, work for the fire department.
Hello, Lucas.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, Lucas.
Hey, guys, so, I pretty much just wanted to come up here and give a public service announcement to everyone, um, if you own a business, I would recommend getting it inspected by the fire department, because if it gets inspected, then there's a very high chance that there won't be a fire there, which means that your building will be intact, and your stock will be intact, and you'll be getting sales. You know, it'd be a shame if that goes ablaze, wouldn't it?
What, wait, whoa, 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 sir, that sounds a little threatening.
Whoa, are you an officer?
Fires upon.
Burning buildings?
No, I'm not burning buildings, I'm. I am a senior firefighter FDO.
I have a question, so you're saying it's more likely that someone's business is gonna catch in fire if we don't pay you to inspect it?
Uh, it's not paying, it's completely free.
Oh, oh, okay, never mind.
The government, the government pays.
Yeah, the government pays.
Can you inform the public on how they would go about getting you guys to do an inspection of their property?
So, uh, it's getting inspection, um, you guys could just go ahead and, uh, send over a PO to fire, um, we have our own, uh, postal system now, so, uh, send one to there, or if, you know, if you forget, you could always send one over to, to medic, and they'll, uh, contact us.
How do you reduce the likelihood that someone's place will catch on fire?
Well, with the inspection, it's to, uh, check and make sure that everything is in order, um, you know, and it's all safe, pretty much.
Is it dangerous to keep ample amounts of talcum powder in your house at all times?
That depends, is it talcum pow, gonna, uh, sorry, is the, uh, talcum powder in a bottle, or is it just loosely in?
No, it's like all over the place, like on.
Then, yes, I would say so.
What about, what about like mulch?
Mulch?
Yeah.
I'd say that's fine, I mean, it's like soil, it's like dirt, it actually would be a fire, uh, it would honestly reduce the likelihood of a fire.
What about leaf refuse? Leaf litter?
I keep dry leaves in my house.
Then I would say that's a very bad idea, and I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay, thank you.
Will you ins, inspect the match factory?
There's a mess factory here.
Maybe.
Uh, yeah, I mean, definitely, I would.
Are there any specific recommendations for safe fire safety at a match factory that you could recommend?
Are you opening a freaking match factory, Billy Falco?
I mean, um, I would recommend having sprinklers in the facility, having, uh, fire extinguishers on standby and ready for all employees at their stations, um, I would honestly have like a fucking, um. I would have a payphone at pretty much maybe every room in the building, just in case.
Ten dollars to the swear jar.
How often do you want these, uh, inspections to be happening?
Um, so the inspections are gonna be a bimonthly thing. Still every other month, uh, you know, contacted, and the building is gonna have to be inspected.
Will this include government building, buildings as well, do we request the same way, or?
Um, the government buildings aren't required, um, but it is suggested that they do, but, yes, same way, uh, you would request it.
Alright, we'll be doing that shortly.
What, what precautions would you suggest that Christmas match girls take to prevent fires from their businesses on the streets?
Christmas match girls?
Little girls that sell Christmas matches on the streets to stay warm, yes.
I, is that a thing?
Yes, it is, it is a thing, yes. Yeah, that's a thing, there's a famous, like, song about it, yep.
I shouldn't marry her, 'cause children are banned.
Could you sing us a song?
Yeah, could you sing us a song?
That goes against my wish.
I'm sorry, Benny isn't around to hear. No, it's here, uh, no, we would not be singing that song.
I, I was told by the King that I can't sing, I'm sorry.
Well, anyway, some precautions, I'd probably recommend that they have their boxes taped up, so that, you know, nothing can light them, 'cause they can't light if they're not outside of the box, or near any fires.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I'll spread the word.
What if they're attacked by somebody with a flamethrower?
That's, that, I think that's just.
Then that's just unfortunate, that's, yeah, that, that's not really my jurisdiction at that point.
That's, that's rock, paper, flamethrower, you know, flamethrower, what's that?
Match child flamethrower.
Yeah.
Uh, Lucas, would it, would it be a fair? Lucas, would it be a fair statement to say that, uh, do you get an increase in fire calls to properties or businesses with an operational grill or oven in them?
I would say so, yes.
Spontaneously combusting?
I would say so, yes.
Okay.
Do they spread ma, mulch around their kitchens to less?
You could actually, uh, ask Mr. Councilman Winters here, uh, it's, I'm sorry to say this to everyone, Jason, but his burger shot maybe went up on, in flames once every day.
Whoa.
So, so, sometimes more than that, I, I think there was a record of three times in one day, one, one time, so.
Yeah.
But, um, since, since.
Does that suggest that the burger's a burger shot of flame broiled?
Uh, sure.
Hell, yeah, yeah.
But, um, since, since this inspection, there hasn't been any fires there, knock on wood.
Oh, wow, okay.
Really?
So.
Woo, go fire department!
Uh, I also have not had any fires at my premises since getting a fire inspection as well.
Oh, that's so cool.
Conspiracy from a big burger. Think, uh, big fire has something to do with this.
Thank you for your service.
Alright, thank you guys for your time.
You're a pillar of the community.
Mr. Kupu.
Uh, I, we don't know that, can you say your name into the mic, please, sir?
You know where the hell I am, Boblin.
Yeah, that's right.
Sir. That tower on Lincoln.
That's a dollar for the swear jar.
That's a swear, he swore, he swore.
Eh, hell, may not be a swear word, alright, continue on, Angie.
Just a place for a soup. Just a public service announcement slash comment. Everyone's enjoying the hunting, it's good times, get to shoot animals, eat meat, all that good stuff. However, a simple reminder to people with their hunting rifles, that carrying a hunting rifle in the city is brandishable, stop doing it, you will get fined, figure it out, thank you.
Thank you, you're a pillar of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Kupu.
Oh, I do have a proposal. Official establishment of, of the swear jar. And, like, all the fun.
No seconds.
Is it a necessity at this time?
Can we add the word weather to the swear jar?
What the, alright, um.
This is crazy weather.
Which version of the word weather, or not, I use it correctly?
That's a swear. Now the sun went down, we didn't get a warning.
The, uh, floor is still open if anyone would like to.
The snow's kinda flopped out now.
Statements.
Isn't a gentleman with the AA meeting, got anything for us? Oh, yes, I'm wondering, uh, maybe, maybe, I zoned out for a little bit, I didn't know we were on this part. Uh, I was wondering, when are we gonna get like an official, not only mental health, but any type of clinic, you know, things people can opt into who are struggling, either, you know, suicidal thoughts, depression, uh, alcohol abuse, substance abuse.
Yeah, Detective Asher Rooney. Do it in the church.
Oh, yeah, people, they're just struggling without either alcohol, drugs, depression, suicidal thoughts, or things like that.
Alright, Doctor, can you, you wanna speak to this?
So, it is in the works, um.
I don't know what to do, any of this thing, stuff.
Parsons just got relined, um, I, I believe, Dr. Whitney, the SOP's almost done or completed?
Um, so, Dr. Francesca Rooney is currently working on the SOP, redoing our SOPs for the mental health clinic as the person who was running it left the state.
Oh.
Also, um, we are currently about to opening, or about to open our hiring for anyone who's interested in psych and providing therapy, so if anyone is interested, please send a letter to medic, and hopefully soon, um, renovations at Parsons will be complete, and we'll have, uh, the doors open.
So, basically, me wanting to host an AA meeting here after this town hall meeting would be useless.
No, you can still do that.
No, why would, why would you say that?
No, you can definitely.
Okay, okay.
You can still do that, that is perfectly fine, we actually, I would say we would encourage that, because that would encourage the community to also help the community out, and we don't have those types of things set up, we're currently just working on getting counselors for people to talk to.
Okay, wonderful, I will be attempting to host one after the town hall meeting here, actually, after it's over, and if nobody shows up, we can do it after the next town hall meeting.
Yep, and if you need us for anything after that, just send a letter to medic and we can help set up with psych after.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Alright, I hope that, uh, answered your questions, sir. Alright, any more questions for the council? Any more statements from the council? If not, leave it adjourned. I'm the American.
Ah, shit.
And happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah.
Happy holiday!
Quick, see? Too much, too much, I'm, I'm, I'm breaking down.
I have a match for you.
He, he's still here, he's.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Well, that's it, that's it.
No.
Yeah, it's like a maze.
No, no, it wasn't a song, it was a riddle.
Alright, so that was table for now.
That was bullshit, sorry.